Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonian Moors Premium, Antay Khal the Rani. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Consul Court. Today is Class 66, Class 66. What did we learn in Class 65? Well, we're still going over the Act of Al-Dusers in 1906, Chapter 5, right? So so far, we've read over Articles 77 through 96. And so far, what have we learned so far, right? So we've always been talking about legislation. We've been talking about taxation in the form of duties, right? We're talking maritime law as well as admiralty law, right? Because anything that comes off the ships' vessels onto the land inside of warehouses is what you call admiralty, right? Everything in the seaport is maritime. So we're talking about law, L-A-W, right? Land, air, water, right? And sometimes commonly known as the sea, right? So we're talking about law. So who oversees the custom ports? The moors, right? Because all about the moors ports, that's what it says in your treaty. The treaty is supreme law of land. But most importantly, what the moors have to always take away from what we're reading thus far, it's all about your legislation. Without legislation, you cannot enforce customs. Without legislations, you cannot bring back the empire. Without legislation, you cannot now try to enforce what's commonly known as fraud and smuggling. Everything is about the pen, moors. The pen will put an end to colonialism, right? That way, we can start taking over our land, our laws, and our wealth. That's the triple principle, right? It's all about the triple principle. So what else are we learning from Chapter 5? We're learning something very, very, very important. We're learning that the moors have civil and criminal jurisdiction over any foreign citizens, subjects, proteges, and persons in our jurisdiction, right? This is the reason why the colonists never wanted you to understand that you were a moor. What type of moor? A Moroccan moor, right? Because they knew that not only could you collect taxes, that you also had a civil and criminal jurisdiction to enforce those taxes. This is the most important thing that moors have to learn thus far, what we've been reading in Chapters 1, Chapters 2, 3, 4, and now we're into 5. Moors have to understand that she who controls the land controls its laws and its wealth. Well, how do you control the laws? That's your law enforcement and your course. So you have to understand something, moors. If you go back to 1774, back then, the continental Congress, right? It really wasn't the continental Congress, just stateless people. The colonists, the 13 colonies, ended up being stateless people. But which was the first colony to say that they're going to now terminate the charter with Great Britain? It was Massachusetts, right? So Massachusetts was the first colonial state, first colonial state to terminate their charter with Great Britain. And after that, the other 12 colonial colonies. It took them two years leading up until 1776, by the time all 13 agreed that they were going to expire, dissolve their charters they had with Great Britain. What was the first thing they said in Massachusetts, leading all the way up to Philadelphia in 1776? They said they did not want to come under criminal and criminal and civil jurisdiction of Great Britain. See, they recognized between 1774 and 1776, they didn't want no one overseeing the civil and criminal jurisdiction over them. Great Britain at the time was extending what's called extraterritoriality jurisdiction, of course, all the way into Morocco to oversee the 13 colonies. They were bringing their parliamentary procedures all the way from Great Britain, all the way into Morocco to oversee the 13 colonies, because all the 13 colonies were original British colonies. They were an extension of Great Britain. So therefore, when the 13 colonies decided to now dissolve their charters with Great Britain, that means ultimately, they got rid of extraterritoriality of Great Britain. They got rid of the police to govern over them from Great Britain. They wanted to govern their own affairs. So once they now breached those contracts, those charters that they had with Great Britain, and they started now getting into sovereignty and independence, how were they able to get into sovereignty and independence? They started signing contracts with the Sultan in Morocco. They traded one monarchy with Great Britain, right? King George, et cetera. And now signed a contract with another monarchy called the Sultan of Morocco. And that Sultan wanted what? Taxes, right? And that Sultan also had criminal and civil jurisdiction over the 13 colonies. But the original 13 colonists realized, yeah, we'll sign the contract, but we don't plan on enforcing it. You have to understand in history, so in 1774, the 13 colonies, they breached their contracts with Great Britain. They didn't turn around, sign contracts with the empire, and they started breaching those contracts immediately after they signed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787. What happened next? They created the Naturalization Act of 1790. After 1790, United States America started to get into what's called Enemy Alien Act of 1798, right? 1798, they deemed all the moors to be aliens and subjects in their jurisdiction. They immediately start trying to get out of those treaties by any means necessary. What else happened in 1798? The United States of America said they cut off all the treaties they had with France and Spain, where it is where France and Spain helped the United States of America to defeat the British. And as soon as they defeated the British as a collective group, France, Spain, and United States of America, soon as they defeated the British, guess what the United States of America did? They canceled, dissolved the treaties they had with France and Spain, and they felt that they didn't need them no more. So what did they do next? Now they're trying to get out of the contracts with the moors. What type of moors? Moroccan moors in Morocco. What are they trying to do? Next thing you know, if you look up, in 1791, right, excuse me, 1871, they create what? The Act of Congress, 1871, more specifically, February 21st, 1871, they create the United States. Why did they create the United States? They wanted to now what? Try to dissolve the United States of America, because the United States of America was on the contract and obligated to the treaties, not the United States. So once again, they're trying to dissolve charters, they're trying to dissolve contracts. And the Sultan said, yeah, that's not going to work this time. We know how you do, colonists, and we're going to enforce these treaties on you, because if you don't abide by these treaties under the name of the United States of America, then you can go back home. So therefore, the Sultan told the United States of America, you create the United States, I don't care nothing about that, because I don't recognize the United States. I recognize the United States of America, because that's the name on the treaty and that's the name on the original constitution of the United States of America. And this is the reason why to this very day, the United States of America still writes their name in international law of the United States of America, because the Sultan's never allowed the 13 colonists to go by the United States as their primary name. It is the United States of America doing business as the United States, all right? This is what you must understand. Why did I go through all that? The United States of America is always trying to breach contracts. They sign the contract like a Trojan horse and get inside, and once they get what they want, they dissolve the contract. They use it like a carrot and stick, right? They just want to get entry like a vampire. The vampire says, you want to let me in? You say, come on inside. Now the vampire's got you, right? This is what we must understand. But at the same time, the moors have to eat some humble pie to understand that we delayed our own justice as well. We can point at the colonists all day and say what the colonists did wrong, right? But what did we do right? Did we go and establish our constitutions? Did we enforce our treaties according to the state? We didn't do a lot of things when they checked the applicable boxes. So therefore, the colonists have done wrong, and we have failed to enforce our own treaties in the proper way. So we have to understand, both parties now need to come back to the table. Who's the other party? The United States of America. Who's the other party? The competent moor states need to come to the table and get back into what's called foreign relations, in order to enforce foreign policies, i.e. the constitutions, all the treaties, and start to establish our diplomatic relations again. Both sides need to come to the table and fix this. If the United States of America don't want to come to the table and maintain diplomatic relations with the friendly applications to set up the arrangements, no worries, the Consul Court comes in and settles the dispute, and we move on forward, right? Okay, let's go ahead and get into Class 66. As all the moors know, we open up with the Constitution. This is AMPAC's Constitution, represents AMPAC's latitude and longitude of our state. All the moors of the commonly known 50 states, right? The United States calls it their 50 Union States, but they're not states, they're municipal corporations, right? They're chartered colonies, and in international law, they're known as organs of an international organization. For example, the state of Colorado is an organ of the United States. And the United States is an international organization or intergovernmental organization according to international law that's doing business on behalf of the United States of America. Okay, that must be understood. So in each of the territories, which each of the territories? Well, the United States of America would tell you, they have 50 Union States. What that means in international law, if you go back and read the United Nations Charter of 1945, right? Talking about Chapters 11, 12, and 13, they refer to the lands being trust territories. They don't refer to them as being states. They refer to them as being trust territories. So the United States International Organization and its 50 different organs of the United States, i.e. municipal corporations, are holding on to several territories. And in each of those territories, all the moors need to have their own constitution that outlines the latitude, longitude of that territory. That must be understood, okay? Let's move on. All right, so in Class 65, we were now still reading Chapter 5, right? In Chapter 5, we're still reading Chapter 5. We're going to come down now to Article 96. We left off on Article 96, okay? Let's go ahead and scroll down to it. All right, so in Article 96, obviously, we started reading over it in Class 65, but as a recap, we'll go ahead and read again today. So today, we'll read Articles 96 through 100, then we'll go back and recap, and then we'll finish up with Articles 101 through 104, okay? All right, so if we go ahead and get you to start reading Article 96.
The value of the chief articles of merchandise dueable in the moorish customs is to be appraised every year under the conditions specified in the foregoing article by a committee on customs valuations meeting at Tangier and consisting of: 1, 3 members appointed by the moorish government; 2, 3 members appointed by the diplomatic body at Tangier; 3, 1 delegate of the state bank; 4, 1 agent of the delegation of the 5% Moroccan loan of 1904. This committee shall appoint from 12 to 20 honorary members resident in Morocco whom it shall consult when called upon to determine the value and whenever it may see fit. These honorary members shall be selected from the list of notables drawn up in the case of foreign subjects by each delegation and in the case of moors by the Sultan's representative. They shall be appointed as far as possible in proportion to the importance of the commerce of each nation. The committee shall be appointed for the term of 3 years. The schedule of values fixed by it shall serve as a basis for the appraisals, which the administration of moorish customs shall make in every custom house. It shall be posted at all custom houses and in the chanceries of delegations and consulates at Tangier. The schedule may be revised at the end of 6 months in case of considerable changes in the values of certain articles. Article 97. A permanent committee to be known as the Committee of Customs shall be organized at Tangier and appointed for a term of 3 years. It shall consist of a special commissioner of his sheriffian majesty, of a member of the diplomatic or consular body appointed by the diplomatic body at Tangier, and of a delegate from the state bank. It shall be empowered to add to its members in an advisory capacity 1 or more representatives of the customs service. This committee shall exercise its high supervision over the customs service and shall have the right to propose to his sheriffian majesty such measures as are likely to affect improvement in the service and assure the regularity and supervision of operations and collections, land shipping, land transportation handling, the incoming and outgoing of merchandise, storage, appraisal, liquidation, and collection of duties. The creation of such a committee of customs shall in no way infringe the rights stipulated in favor of the bondholders by Articles 15 and 16 in the loan contract of June 12, 1904. Instructions to be drawn up by the Committee of Customs and the services interested therein shall determine the details of the enforcement of Article 96 and of the present article. They shall be submitted to the advice and consent of the diplomatic body. Article 98. In custom houses where sufficient warehouses exist, the customs service shall take charge of the disembarked merchandise as soon as it is turned over by the captain of the vessel to the officers in charge of the lightage. One shall receive therefore and until such time as it shall have been regularly cleared from the customs. The customs service is responsible for injuries caused by loss of or damage to merchandise which may be imputed to the fault or negligence of its officers. It is not responsible for damages resulting either from the natural decay of merchandise or from too lengthy a storage in the warehouse or from cases of this nature. In custom houses where there are not sufficient warehouses, the agents of the moxen are required only to employ such means of preservation as may be at the disposal of the custom house. A revision of the storage regulations now enforced shall be made under the direction of the diplomatic body whose decisions shall be taken by a majority vote in concert with the sheriffian government. Article 99. Confiscated merchandise and conveyances shall be sold under direction of the customs service within 8 days from the date of final judgment rendered by the competent tribunal.
Okay, well, we'll stop right there. Thank you very much, mother. All right. So going back up, right? There's a lot of information we just went over, a lot of reading, very long articles, right? So let's go ahead and recap quickly, that way we can move on, okay? Some of this is self-explanatory, but let's just recap nonetheless. Okay, Article 96. The value of the chief articles of merchandise dueable in the moorish customs is to be appraised every year under the conditions specified in the foregoing article by a committee of customs valuations meeting at Tangier and consisting of... So first things first, the moorish customs, overseen customs, right? We understand that. And now we're putting together a committee on customs. So it's a committee team coming together. That's moors overseeing the ports, right? Okay? All right, so number 1, how do we put it together? Okay, these are basic instructions, basic, right? This is 1906, this can always be modified if we need more people. Okay, number 1, 3 members appointed by the moorish government. So the moors appoint who oversee the ports. Number 2, 3 members appointed by the diplomatic body at Tangier. So at one time, a diplomatic body could also appoint some people to be on the committee as well, right? But keep in mind, the United States of America is the last Christian power that has anybody to appoint to the committee. All the other Christian powers, the 12 Christian powers who signed on to this treaty, Germany, Spain, Portugal, Russia, Belgium, Great Britain, et cetera, all of them have terminated their agreement to this treaty, everybody but the United States of America, all right? That must be understood. We'll talk about that a little bit more in the future. Okay, number 3, 1 delegate of the state bank. Well, how can moors have a bank if we don't have a state? If the moors have been reading our treaties all this time, you will start understanding this word "state" is everywhere. Every time you look up a definition about, just about anything that relates to international law, it keeps saying the word "state." But what about the word "state"? Capital S, "state," not lowercase s, okay? Number 4, 1 agent of the delegation of the 5% Moroccan loan of 1904. This committee shall appoint from 12 to 20 honorary members resident in Morocco whom it shall consult when called upon to determine the value and whatever it may see fit. These honorary members shall be selected from the list of notables drawn up in the case of foreign subjects by each delegation and in the case of moors by the Sultan's representatives. So now there's no more Sultan, you replace the word Sultan with "state," "state representatives." So it's all about the moors overseeing this treaty. We are the authority of this treaty, and everybody is subordinate to the moors in this treaty, treaty supreme law of land. Continuing, "They shall be appointed as far as possible in proportion to the importance of the commerce of each nation. The committee shall be appointed for the term of 3 years. The schedule of values fixed by it shall serve as a basis for the appraisals, which the administration of moorish customs shall make in every custom house. It shall be posted at all custom houses and in the chanceries of delegations and consulates at Tangier." So somehow, some way, us moors, we have to now come up with an appraisal, right? The appraisal schedule on how we determine the value, a fixed value of appraisal as it relates to merchandise. How do we appraise merchandise, right? Why do we have to appraise it? Because if the United States or anybody violating our treaty rights or our Moroccan law, we get to redeem and confiscate their merchandise. So now we have to come up with a value price, right? We have to price it and then be able to now sell it, okay? Going to redeem whatever fines and penalties that the captain couldn't pay, or the state that we've confiscated that vessel and that merchandise, if they don't want to pay, then we just salvage things, we liquidate, and we sell off their merchandise. So therefore, there's an appraisal schedule that we have listed, okay? Let's continue.
Does it also have to do with tax revenue?
Well, yeah, with tax revenue is one thing, but if they haven't paid, then yeah, we liquidate, right? That's how we redeem, to get some type of compensation, right?
To give us half the schedule.
That's correct, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, let's continue the reading of the schedule. "May be revised at the end of 6 months in case of considerable changes in the values of certain articles." Article 97. A permanent committee to be known as the Committee of Customs. So the moors need a committee of customs, okay? Shall be organized at Tangier and appointed for a term of 3 years. It shall consist of special commissioner of his sheriffian majesty, of a member of the diplomatic or consular body appointed by the diplomatic body at Tangier, and a delegate from a state bank. It shall be empowered to add its members in advisory capacity 1 or more representatives of the customs service. The committee shall exercise its high supervision over the customs. So the committee shall exercise its high supervision over the customs. So who's supposed to be sitting on the committee? Moors oversee the committee, but also some of the citizens of the United States of America. They're the diplomatic body. So every time you see the word diplomatic body, that's them appointing their specialists who also can sit on the committee, right? You have to remember, all treaties are in light manner. It's not a one-sided contract, right? It is now equitable status for the citizen of the United States of America to also sit on the body, right? That way, we can govern together as a collective, we're cohabitating as it relates to the committee. However, the moors still oversee the ports, we're the authority, but yet we have other people that sit on the board as well. They have less shares than we do, less say than we do, but yet they have a say nonetheless.
So it said the Tangier Committee. Would that be the United States Committee that you're saying that would also be part of the customs?
So Tangier at this time, this is where they were meeting, right? It was what you call the neutral ground. Now there's no such thing as a neutral ground, because now everything is transferred to Tangier back on this side of the empire called the West, okay? So now we can appoint wherever we want to meet at. It's not, no longer Tangier, we can say whatever the particular latitude, longitude that we'll have our committee meetings, that's where it'll take place, right? The moors are talking about this in the future in terms of where the committee will meet, okay? Annually, quarterly, or whatever it may be, all right? So you've got to remember, this is written in 1906.
And this is the Committee of Nation-States?
That's correct.
In the Moroccan Empire.
That's correct. But keep in mind, the United States of America is the last so-called nation-state that's sitting at the table, of the round table. It was 12 of them. Now it's only 1 of them sitting there along with the moors. We're talking about that today. Okay, all right, from the top. "The committee shall exercise its high supervision over the customs service and shall have the right to propose to his sheriffian majesty such measures as are likely to affect improvement and service and assure that the regularity and supervision of operations and collections, landing shipping, land transportation, handling, the incoming and outgoing of merchandise, storage, appraisals, liquidation, and collections of duty." So this is what the moors oversee, right? We oversee all the regularity. What's the regularity? Legislation. And our bylaws, right? That oversees collections. When any foreigners, subjects, proteges don't pay, then we liquidate their assets, and that's how we redeem our expenses, our fines, okay? Let's move on. Continue the reading. "Customs shall in no way infringe the rights stipulated in favor of the bondholders by Articles 15 and 16 in the loan contract of June 12, 1904. Instructions to be drawn up by the Committee of Customs and the services interested therein shall determine the details of the enforcement of Article 96 and of the present article. They shall be submitted to the advice and consent of the diplomatic body." Article 98. "In custom houses where the sufficient warehouse exists, the customs service shall take charge of the disembarked merchandise as soon as it is turned over by the captain of the vessel to the officers in charge of the lightage, who shall receive therefore and until such time as it shall have been regularly cleared from the customs. The customs service is responsible for injuries caused by loss of damage to merchandise which may be imputed to the fault of or negligence of its officers. It is not responsible for damages resulting either from the natural decay of merchandise or from too lengthy a storage in the warehouse or from cases of vice major, right?" So what, so in other words, if they have merchandise sitting in the warehouse, and let's say the Consul Court has been dealing with a case, right? Of fraud, smuggling, now their merchandise has just been sitting in the warehouse for months on end. If that merchandise is damaged, the moors are not necessarily responsible for it, okay? Because it's just been sitting there. However, if we're negligent in damaging it ourselves, then we're responsible, all right? But also, they talk about this word right here, "this major," right? What does "this major" mean? Okay, let's look at that definition real quick. "This major," mother.
1, an overwhelming force. Examples: hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, earthquake.
All right, so that's what "this major" is, right? It's just a natural disaster, okay? So when you look at that in your treaties, moors, moors are not responsible for a natural disaster if in fact it damages the merchandise of foreigners, okay? Let's continue. "In the custom houses where there are not sufficient warehouses, the agents of the moxen are required only to employ such means of preservation as may be at the disposal of the custom house. A revision of the storage regulation now enforced shall be made under direction of the diplomatic body whose decisions shall be taken by a majority vote in concert with the sheriffian government." Okay, so we're going to go ahead now and pick it up from Articles 99. We'll go ahead and read Articles 99 all the way through 104.
Let me read that, read that, okay. 99. Confiscated merchandise and conveyances shall be sold under the direction of the customs service within 8 days from the date of final judgment rendered by the competent tribunal. Article one hundred. The net proceeds of the sale of confiscated merchandise and articles become the final property of the state. As to pecuniary fines and compromises thereof, the amount after deduction of costs of all kinds shall be divided between the Sharifian treasury and those who have participated in the repression of fraud or smuggling. One-third to be distributed by the customs among the informants, one-third to the officers who have seized the goods, one-third to the Moors treasury. If the seizure has been made without the intervention of an informant, one-half of the fines shall be awarded to the officers making the seizure and the other half to the Moors treasury. Article one oh one. The Moors Customs Authority shall directly inform the diplomatic or counselor agents of any violations of this regulation which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that they may be prosecuted before the competent court. Similar violations made, violations by Moors subjects shall be brought directly by the customs before the Sharifian authority. A delegate of the customs shall be charged to follow the legal proceedings in cases pending before the several jurisdictions. Article one oh two. Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. Article one oh three. In the region bordering on Algeria, the enforcement of these regulations shall be the exclusive concern of France and Morocco. The enforcement of these regulations in the RIF and in general in the regions bordering on the Spanish possessions shall likewise be the exclusive concern of Spain and Morocco. Article one oh four. The provisions of the present regulations, other than those relating to penalties, may be revised by unanimous design of the diplomatic body at Tangier and in accord with the Magent at the expiration of a term of two years from the date of their taking effect.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go back now, recap, we'll go back to Article ninety-nine. All right? We'll go back to Article ninety-nine. Okay, Article ninety-nine, of, of chapter five. Confiscated merchandise and conveyances shall be sold under direction of the customs service within eight days from the date of final judgment rendered by the competent tribunal. Okay? Now, if we start thinking about France versus United States of America, nineteen fifty-two, the judgment, right? If we go to it now, so that's Article ninety-nine, right? As you can see right here, so in chapter five, it covers Articles eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, and one oh two. But the ICJ did not mention ninety-nine, right? So if we go back to ninety-nine. Ninety-nine. Confiscated merchandise and conveyance shall be sold under direction of the customs services within eight days from the date of final judgment rendered by who? The competent tribunal. So this is just one of the articles that the ICJ probably had a little slight oversight. But the reality is, this is another article that the Moors can utilize in enforcing consul court, okay? So Article ninety-nine is another article that Moors can utilize to enforce their competent consul court as it relates to a judgment rendered because of what you're dealing with, it relates to customs services. And in customs services, there might have been a confiscation of merchandise. You see? All right. So I just wanted to show you that as it relates to France versus United States of America, as we all know, as we all know, as a recap, it's about the Act of Al-Dusers of the existing consul tribunals. And it covered eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, and one oh two, okay? Just keep reading. Okay. Article one hundred. The net proceeds of the sale of confiscated merchandise and articles became the final property of the state. Let's read that again. Article one hundred of chapter five. The net proceeds of the sale of confiscated merchandise and articles became the final property of the state. Why don't I read that again? How, how can Moors confiscate anything from the colonists and we don't have a state? All this time, the Moors kept saying treaty supreme law of the land, we kept saying that over and over again. Go and look at the Constitution in United States of America. Article six, clause two supremacy clause, treaty supreme law of the land. But yet, we wasn't reading our treaties to find out, in order for us to enforce the United States of American Constitution, the Moors needed what? A state. It's right there in your treaties, Moors. You can't put liens on this columnist. Because lien means what? You're trying to confiscate something, right? You're looking for a fine based upon some type of action, right? You're looking for a civil action against someone. You're trying to redeem something based upon punitive damages, some type of tort claim you've got against them. So you're trying to lien something they got because you got pain. How you gonna lien someone and confiscate what they got or make them pay out when you didn't even have a state? You see the mistakes we were making? I get it, Moors have pain and we're just jumping out there because we were just trying to fix this, right? But the reality is, we were skipping over boxes. We were trying to go to the solution, but the reality is, we didn't understand the mathematical equation. We didn't understand the mathematical problem in order to come up with the proper solution, the proper answer on how to now do what? Confiscate merchandise through what? Our state. It's right there in your treaties, Moors. Let's continue. All right, from the top. Article one hundred. The net proceeds of the sale of confiscated merchandise and articles become the final property of the state. As to pecuniary fines and compromises thereof, the amount after deductions of costs of all kinds shall be divided between the Sharifian treasury. What's the Sharifian treasury? Moors treasury. And those who have participated in the repression of fraud or smuggling. So what does that mean? Not only through, through the confiscation, right? The monies comes out and this goes to the state. But it goes to the state and from the state to the treasury. And a percentage of those monies collected goes to who else? Those who have participated in the repression of fraud or smuggling. And who is participating? The Moors Customs Officers. It was their job to be the watchmen to watch out for what? Fraud or smuggling. So the compensation goes to the state first and from the state to the treasury and from the treasury to those Moors officers of the customs. They also get some compensation because they assisted with the repression of fraud or smuggling. In other words, it's an incentive put in place, we'll learn more about that. Here we go. One-third to be distributed by the customs among the informants, one-third to the officers who have seized the goods, and one-third to the Moors treasury. See, these incentives put in place, let's go back. So the Moors treasury is also what? The Sharifian treasury. It's semantics, right, synonyms. But these are incentives for the Moors Customs Authorities to look out for what? Fraud and smuggling and try to repress it. To be their informant to call it out if they see anything that's illicit trade. Let's continue. If the seizure has been made without the intervention of an informant, one-half of the fines shall be awarded to the officers making the seizure and the other half to the Moors treasury. You see? Article one oh one. Okay. Now, before we read Article one oh one, who talked about Article one oh one? ICJ. France versus United States of America, nineteen fifty-two, the judgment, page one ninety-seven, right?
What's, what is the name of that one?
France versus United States of America. Nineteen fifty-two. Okay, so Article what? Eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, and one oh two, right? So let's go ahead and read one oh, one oh one, this is what the ICJ pointed out to the Moors. So you Moors need to enforce Article one oh one. Let's read it. The Moors Customs Authorities shall directly inform the diplomatic or counselor agents of any violations of this regulation which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction. So the foreign citizens, i.e. citizens of the United States, international musician, and the citizens of the United States of America are under the jurisdiction of the Moors Customs Authorities. Let's read it again. Article one oh one. The Moors Customs Authorities shall directly inform the diplomatic or counselor agents of any violations of this regulation which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that they may be prosecuted before a competent court. Now, do you understand, Moors? As I've said several times, this is why they have the label you as Negro, Black, Color, African-American, and Minority. It's because those names are not in the contract. The only way you can enforce a contract, you must know the names is in the contract. You want to enforce a contract? Okay, show me proof that your name is in it. If you say you're Negro, Black, and Color, Minority, African-American, that don't exist in the contract, which means you can't enforce the contract. This is why the Collins kept you from understanding who you are. This is why the Moors have always said, we, we suffer from a lack of what? Knowledge of what? Self. This is contract law. Okay. Listen. Similar violations, similar violations, similar violations by Moors subjects shall be brought directly by the customs before the Sharifian authority. You see that, Moors? The competent Moors state governments and their competent courts, according to this treaty, have an obligation to prosecute Moors subjects for violating our Moroccan law. That's the obligation of the treaty. This is why I keep trying to tell, Moors, if you have not consented back to a Moors state government through the proper written instrument to allow a Moors state judge to sign off on your consent form to consent back to a competent Moors state government, then you are still a Moors subject. And the Moors state governments have jurisdiction over you. If you're, if so, you're a Moors subject with a nationality card in your pocket. That's the truth. It's in the treaty. Let's read it again. Article one oh one. The Moors Customs Authorities shall directly inform the diplomatic or counselor agents of any violations of this regulation which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that they may be prosecuted before the competent court. Similar violations by Moors subjects shall be brought directly by the customs before the Sharifian authority. So therefore, Moors subjects are under the jurisdiction of the competent court. Of Moors. This is a Moors subject, you have to understand. We have to correct our political status as Moors. We have to correct what's called your legal personality. The treaties say what? Treaty Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one says what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country has to return to Morocco and choose between the entire submission of the laws of the empire. You have to consent back to the state. Until then, you're still a Moors subject. We're talking about that today. Let's continue, continue the reading. A delegate of the customs shall be charged to follow the legal proceedings in cases pending before the several jurisdictions. Article one oh two. All right, so we talked about this, right? Let's just really quickly go back. Nineteen fifty-two, France versus United States of America, page one ninety-seven, Article one oh two. Let's get into it. All right? ICJ say you Moors need to enforce Article one oh two. Okay, Article one oh two. Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. That's Article one oh two. So the consul court has to, has to now do what? Adjudicate both foreigners, subjects, and proteges in our jurisdiction. Anybody who's violating Moroccan law has to come before the court. This is what Moors have to understand. Well, let's just, let's take it deep. Okay, let, let's, we gotta really explore what's happening here. Article one oh two, okay? Let, let's go back to France versus United States of America, let's, let's start there. So as we already know, okay, let, let's start at the top. In nineteen oh six, the twelve powers in Al-Dusers, right? So it was twelve powers, okay? Who were the twelve powers? Let, let's go into it. We're talking about Moors subjects, but we're going to take a quick second, real quick, just to talk about this, okay? The twelve signatory powers in Act of Al-Dusers nineteen oh six. We'll see, United States of America, France, Spain, Portugal, Austria-Hungary, Italy, Great Britain, the Holy See Vatican, Germany, Russia, Belgium, and the Netherlands. And all the colonists have terminated any type of relations to the Act of Al-Dusers except for the United States of America. They're the last colonial power claiming a jurisdiction in Morocco. Listen. So right here, it starts off nineteen oh six, there was twelve powers, right? And they were talking about what? The Act of Al-Dusers. And it was talking about the existing consul tribunals. And it was talking about enforcing all of these treaty provisions, right? These provisions of the Act of Al-Dusers, all the way up to Article one oh two and one nineteen, okay? But what else is happening? Listen. So the ICJ says for, for, for example, chapter five, keep in mind, what is the ICJ pointing out? The Moors have consul tribunals, right? Consul court powers, right? In chapter five. It was pointing out chapter five just as an example, okay? So it says for, okay? For example, chapter five, which deals with the quote, customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling, contains Article one oh two, which provides, here it goes. Article one oh two. Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. This is the ICJ pointing this out to Moors and to United States of America. Why was the ICJ pointing this out? To let the United States of America know, it was really the Moors supposed to be adjudicating you based upon this treaty. But you got the Moors in a shallow grave and they don't know they're Moors. And the ones that do know they're Moors don't know how to make a proper claim to the estate through the word state. What else did the ICJ continue to say? Listen. In the conditions which extended at that time, this article made it necessary for the prosecution of nationals of the twelve powers for fraud and smuggling to be dealt with in the consul court. ICJ is pointing this out. Listen. Since nineteen thirty-seven, the position has been one in which eleven of the powers have abandoned their obligatory privileges. Eleven out of the twelve abandoned the treaty of the Act of Al-Dusers. Only person left, the United States of America. Okay, so the ICJ pointed out, since nineteen thirty-seven, the position has been one in which eleven of the powers Okay, so the ICJ pointed out, since nineteen thirty-seven, the position has been one in which eleven of the powers have abandoned their capitulatory pri- privileges, and their consul jurisdiction has ceased to exist. Okay, so what you gotta catch there is what? Eleven was out, but one's left. And who was it? The United States of America, which still was claiming consul jurisdiction in Morocco under what's commonly known as regime of capitulations, as well as extraterritoriality. Regime of capitulations means what? Holding on to land under use of force, military arms. Extraterritoriality means what? Now bringing in your courts to oversee that conquered land. Okay. Let's move on. So what Moors have to understand is this, going back to your treaty. Who are Morse subjects? Negroes, Blacks, Colors, African Americans, right? Who else?
Indians.
Indians, and who else? Morse Americans. Why are Morse Americans still subjects? Because Morse Americans can't prove that they are Moors. How can you prove that you're a Moor? Okay, tell me your state of facts. Tell me the facts about your state. You got state ID? You got constitution? Pre-branch of government? Elections? Public inauguration? Did a Morse state judge sign off on your consent form to consent back to the state? So that way the state could recognize you as a Moor? Was your constitution ratified, deposed, promulgated with the United Nations? Article one oh two? Secretary? Recognizing the United Nations of nineteen forty-five charter, got its provisions from the Act Al-Dusers, chapter seven, Articles one twenty to one twenty-three? As it relates to ratification, depository, and promulgation? If the answer is no, then you are still a Morse subject. What else make Morse Americans subjects? Okay, here it is. Moors are claiming to be Moroccan, right? They say this is Morocco. And then they turn around as an oxymoron and say what? American. You cannot be a Morse American, i.e. Moroccan American. Those are two different statuses. You cannot be Moroccan American. Why do I say that? Is that because Anpack says that? Let's, let's think about it.
It's an oxymoron.
It's an oxymoron, yes, but what is the Supreme Law of the Land? Treaties, right? What does your treaty say, Moors? Your treaty said what? Okay, let's go to it. Let's go to it. Let's go to the Treaty Madrid eighteen eighty. Let's read it again. Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land, and here's what the treaty says. Article fifteen of the Treaty Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco. So the Moors are what? Subjects where? In Morocco. Listen. Any subject of Morocco. Did it say any subject of America? Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country who shall return to Morocco. Did it say return to America? Listen. Shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which have been readily necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, have to choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. Choose between what? Oh, okay, let's go to it. Are you Moroccan? Or are you American? But you can't claim to be what? Moroccan American, i.e. Morse American. This is what your treaty says, Moors. You have to choose between, Moors. You have to choose between. You look at the rights of indigenous people, year two thousand and seven. Article five says what? You have to choose between your political status. Go back and read it. You gotta choose your political, legal, economic, social, cultural of the state. That's what it says. Political means what? State. Which state are you going to choose, Moors? You're gonna choose what? You gotta choose between. That's what your treaty says. Are you Moroccan? Or are you American? And if you're saying you're American, and that's what a lot of Moors say, I'm not trying to be insensitive right now. We, we gotta tell the truth. We gotta tell it like it is. We gotta fix this. I'm trying to be sincere here, but I gotta tell the truth. Let's use some common sense, Moors. Listen. If you're claiming to be American, then that means you're also saying you're what? Listen. Go back to your treaty. That you're a Morse subject. Cause any Moors that are in American jurisdiction, and call themselves Americans are Morse subjects. Cause you've been subjugated in a foreign country according to your treaty. Let's go back to your treaty, Moors. You've been subjugated, right? Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country has to choose between the entire submission of the laws of the empire. And what law do you start with? Understanding your treaty rights. What's the second law? Your constitution of your own Morse state. That's the one-two punch. You're not American. You're supposed to be trying to get out of America. Foreign country is what? What's the foreign country, Moors? This is too easy. That's the foreign country. See, Mohammed allowed the citizens of the United States of America to be here to cohabitate with who? Okay. Moroccans. But we've been indoctrinated to believe that we are Americans, and we're not Americans. In eighteen sixty-eight, the United States of America created the Fourteenth Amendment. Eighteen sixty-eight. But why did they come up with it in eighteen sixty-eight? What happened in eighteen sixty-eight? Well, they were finishing up with civil war, right? Civil War eighteen sixty-one to eighteen sixty-five, right? And after that, they realized, we need some legislation, that way we can hold on to these Morse subjects and make them now citizens of the United States of America, right? Right? Okay, so what happened? Listen. Moors gotta know their history. In seventeen eighty-nine, the United States of America, in their constitution, of seventeen eighty-nine, Dejour Constitution. Remember, the United States of America, they drafted their constitution in seventeen eighty-seven. Okay? Section one. All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States. So you see what they did to you, Moors? They took you from a subject status, put you down into an alien status, and then now what? They made you now a citizen of the United States because they adopted you. They adopted you as one of their own. Why did they do that? Okay, they wanted to try to make you what? Listen. They tried to make you American. They needed to adopt you, so that way you would start taking on their cultures, right? Of being American, and start referring yourself as being the American. It's all strategic for them, right? It's all tactical for them, right? This is why Moors, he said, they're Americans, because you don't realize you've been indoctrinated. Okay, I'm not trying to be insensitive, but let's talk about the history. What happened? Listen. William Duggie versus Joseph Spencer circa April seventeen eighteen fifty-five. We're talking about law and history. This is leading up to the Fourteenth Amendment of eighteen sixty-eight, right? So in eighteen fifty-five, a lot of Moors go about the William Duggie case, right? Versus Joseph Spencer circa, circa April seventeen eighteen fifty-five, where Abraham Lincoln was representing William Duggie, right? So what happened? William Duggie was a Portuguese Moor, i.e. a free white person with the United States of America dual citizenship. William Duggie, the reason why he got off as a Moor, he had some rights in court. He was appropriate for son of suit jurors as a Moor, but what type of Moor was he? He was a Portuguese Moor. That's the part that Moors keep skipping over. He was not a slave. He had a political, political status. He had state ID. He had a legal personality as a Moor. What type of Moor? Portuguese Moor. What type of Moor was he not? He was not a Moroccan Moor. He was a Portuguese Moor, and he had a dual citizenship. So Portugal recognized William Duggie as one of their own, and the United States of America recognized William Duggie as a citizen of the United States of America, right? So that's the reason why William Duggie had a case that could be heard in front of a competent court of the United States of America. It wasn't because he was just a Moor, it's cause he was a Portuguese Moor. His political status was correct. Let's talk about Dred Scott. Lot of Moors know about Dred Scott. We're talking history. We've gone from eighteen fifty-five now to eighteen fifty-seven, right? We're talking Dred Scott versus John Sanford circa March sixth eighteen fifty-seven. We're leading up. United States of America Supreme Court ruling, right? Judge Tenny of the Supreme Court, right? So Dred Scott was a subject, i.e. a slave connotator, that lost his nationality and could not prove he was Moroccan in Morocco. So Dred Scott was what? A Moroccan Moor that had been annexed, right? Usurped and colonized, and they, he lost his nationality. He didn't have state ID to prove that he was what? Moroccan in Morocco. So they recognized that he was actually a subject according to what? Let's go back to it. Let's go back to it. According to what? Now we gotta understand our history, Moors. History is very important to understand, okay? The United States of America's Constitution, Article three, section two, clause one, has these two statuses, citizen, subject, right? So Dred Scott was a subject, right? William Duggie was a citizen, okay? You gotta understand what's happening. You were talking about legal personalities. Let's go back. The reason why Dred Scott could not get any so-called justice is because he was a subject. He was a Moor. He was supposed to, William, Dred Scott was supposed to come under protections of Morocco, but Morocco wasn't protecting him in consul court. He, Dred Scott, didn't realize he was supposed to be called in the form consul court. Morocco did not recognize Dred Scott, cause Dred Scott was not on the registration of the Moroccan Empire. This must be understood. The United States of America, the United States of America did not recognize Dred Scott as being one of their citizens. So he had no jurisdiction to claim, right? So therefore, this is why they said plaintiff in error. Why was he plaintiff in error? He could not come in front of their courts because he, he was not what? A citizen. So what did the United States of America do? They got smart, right? So after eighteen fifty-seven, what happens next? Civil War, right? Eighteen sixty-one to eighteen sixty-five. After eighteen sixty-five, what happens? Fourteenth Amendment. So the United States of America realized, okay? Let's make these subjects citizens of the United States of America. Let's put these, these persons, these naturalized Moors, let's naturalize them and make them citizens of what? The United States. Why? They knew if they made you a citizen, you would slowly but surely start acting like what? Who would you start acting like? American. You start claiming to be American, cause you're starting to blend in because they adopted you. The Fourteenth Amendment is an adoption agency legislation to take you from what's called denizen. Denizen, denizen means what? You're stuck between what? An alien and a subject. Alien, subject, right? Denizen. So therefore, from a subject status, they put you in an alien status, and then promoted you back up to citizen status in order to try to make you think you was American. That was a tactical strategy they used. Let, let me explain. Okay, let's, let's get into it. Let's get into it. This right here, what I have up here, let me minimize it. Everybody, all the Moors know about this. Let's talk about it. This is the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, right? Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, okay? The Moors know about this. Section seven. And being further enacted that the naturalization laws of hereby extended to the aliens of African nativity and persons of African descent approved July fourteenth eighteen seventy, right? So what'd they do? They took the Moors, they don't call you Moors, they called you Africans, cause they knew they were breaching the treaty if they called you a Moor. So they say African, right? Connotator, right? But listen to the side note. What's the side note say? Okay. Aliens of African nativity and descent may become citizens. So what'd they do? They put you in an alien status. You went from subject to alien. That's denizen, right? Subject, then alien, and then they promoted you up to being citizen, right? Why did they do that? Here's why. Okay, listen. They knew that you were a subject of Morocco according to your treaty, right? Treaty Madrid eighteen eighty, okay? Per- uh, Article fifteen, paragraph one, said that any subject of Morocco. Okay, let, let's just take a look at it real quick, okay? Any subject of Morocco. So they tried to take the subjects of Morocco, and now they wanted to make them citizens of America. Listen. Listen. They made you a citizen of America. They adopted you. That way you'll start claiming to be American. They want you to have patriotism of America, cause the more you talked about being American, the less you talked about being what? Moroccan. That was the strategy. That was the tactical thing they did with what? Their pen. What did they do with their pen? Okay, let's go back to it. They made you a citizen, which means they adopted you. And when they adopted you, they immediately told you, you are American as well. See, subjects are of Morocco. Citizens are of America. And this is why Moors, he said, they're Morse Americans, because we've been indoctrinated from the fact that they made us citizens through the Naturalization Act, and now we're going around saying now we're what? Americans. But wait. Moors would say, well, I'm not a citizen of the United States of America, right? You're claiming to be what? Let, let's talk about this. Let's keep it, let's keep it real. You're saying you're, you're Moroccan while simultaneously saying what? You wanna enforce the statutes of America to get your remedy. That don't make no sense. You say you're not a citizen of America while simultaneously trying to memorize, retain, and recite statutes of America. Well, if you're Moroccan, right, of Morocco, where are your laws? Why aren't you retaining and reciting the laws of your own Moroccan state? Why are you claiming the statutes of the United States? You know why you doing it? Because you're still a citizen of the United States of America, cause you realize you don't have a state in Morocco to claim the laws of your state. So therefore, even though you're saying you're not a citizen of the United States of America, you're still going back claiming the statutes of America, which by acquiescence, you're still claiming to be in the jurisdiction of the United States of America coming under the protections of their statutes, which automatically under acquiescence makes you an American, cause you use the American statutes for your remedy. Here's the worst part. If you say you're not a citizen of the United States of America, yet you haven't pledged your allegiance to a Moor state, that puts you in between two states. Now you're just simply stateless. You're saying you're not a citizen of the United States of America, but at the same time, listen, Moors, we're talking about Morse subjects. You haven't claimed to be a Moor of a Moor state, a competent Moor state. So if you have a return to Morocco to consent to a Moor state and say you're not a citizen of the United States of America, that makes you stateless. That's just common sense. All right, let's, let's continue. What, what else is happening? Listen. All right. Definition of person. Fifth Edition, Black历史 Dictionary, right? Fifth Edition. Definition of person, you come down, fifth edition, come under resident alien, right? A resident alien is a person within the meaning of the due process and equal protection clauses- within the meaning of the due process and equal protection clauses of the Fourteenth Amendment." So the Moors were reduced, reduced down to alien. You went from subject to alien, right? Under the Fourteenth Amendment. Then from the Fourteenth Amendment, they passed legislation that now did what? They upgraded you to citizen of America, and you've been calling yourself American ever since. That was a tactical thing they did. It was a strategy to get you away from thinking that you was what? Let's talk about it. Moroccan. They got you further away from this because subjects are of Morocco. Citizens are of America. This is why they never referred to Moors as being subjects. They call you Negro, Black, Color, African American, Indian. And the N-word, anything but subject and anything but Moor in Morocco. Let's continue. We're talking about what? What, what, why are we going over this, Moors? Okay, let's go back to your treaty. You gotta understand, Moors. In the treaty, it talks about Moorish subjects and that the competent, the competent Moors have jurisdiction over Moorish subjects and the competent Moors have to prosecute Moorish subjects for violating what? Moroccan law. So if so, Jew or Moor subjects, if they violate Moroccan law, then they get prosecuted by the competent Moor state government. Listen, Moors. We all know in the Forty-first Congress, Session Three, Chapter sixty-two, right? Chapter sixty-two, what is this about? The United States of America, in order to try to get out of the treaty's provisions, now they think they put the subjects of Morocco, i.e. the Moors, underneath their jurisdiction. Now they said, let's get out of the contract of the United States of America because the United States of America is on a contract with Moors, Moroccan Moors. So let's create the United States. So the United States did what? The United States of America did what? This is Chapter sixty-two, right, of what? The Act of Congress of eighteen seventy-one, okay? "Chapter sixty-two, an act provided government for the District of Columbia." This is history, Moors. "Being enacted by the Senate and House Representatives of the United States of America and Congress assembled that all that part of territory of the United States, included within the limits of the District of Columbia, be and the same is hereby created into a government by the name of the District of Columbia, by which the name is hereby constituted a body corporate for municipal purposes and may contract and be contracted with, sue and be sued, plead and be pleaded, have a seal, and exercise all other powers of a municipal corporation, not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the United States." Not the United States of America, right? They tell you right here, it is the United, United States of America in Congress that created what? The Constitution and law of the United States. Two separate entities. What are they trying to do? They're trying to get out of the contract that they have written in the name of the United States of America. And they think they outfigured out and they, they outboxed the Sultan by creating the United States in order to get out of the contract that says United States of America, right? But wait a minute. So the Sultan said, wait. Okay, I, I see you're trying to pull this move, right? You're trying to pull this move. I even see, I read the rest of it, right? So it's like, okay, what's happening here? You go down to section nine, okay? Section nine, now you're gonna find out, the Sultan's reading this. He said, okay, what, 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 what time is it? He going down to section nine. This is the Sultan's reading. "Section nine. 'And being further enacted that the members of the Legislative Assembly, before they enter, and, and before they enter upon their official duties, shall take and subscribe to following oath or affirmation.' Quote, 'I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.'" Not the United States of America anymore. So the Sultan's recognizing that these colonies are adding again. They already dissolved their charters they had with Great Britain. They already dissolved the treaty they had with France and Spain. And here they come trying to dissolve the treaties and the contract they have with the Sultan by trying to create a brand-new name all over again. So they've gone from the thirteen colonies, naming the, the colonies, right? Then now they create the Continental Congress, then they create the United States of America, now they create the United States. They're constantly trying to breach contracts. But the Sultan said, uh-uh, not this time. What does the Sultan do? All right, so what happened? This is what? Eighteen seventy-one. In eighteen eighty, nine years later, the Sultan says, okay, United States of America, or the United States, but your real name is United States of America, doing business as the United States. So the Sultan never recognized the United States as being a state. The Sultan recognized the United States of America. So he sends over another treaty in eighteen eighty, says, okay, United States of America, here's what's gonna happen. Article fifteen, "Any subject of Morocco that you've naturalized under the Fourteenth Amendment and the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, and that BS you're doing with eighteen seventy-one, trying to change your name on the contract? I'm not going for that. So here's what happened with those subjects. That you're trying to make Americans, and they're not Americans, they're Moroccan. So here's what we're gonna put in the treaty provision. Article fifteen, "Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized by the United States of America and the United States and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which had been readily necessary for him to obtain such naturalization in the United States of America, must choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and come back home to Morocco mentally and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization and a foreign United States of America was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco." There's nowhere in here, Moors, where it says you gotta return to America because you ain't never been American. You were adopted by Americans. It does not make you American by blood, consanguinity. But when you say for the record you're a Moorish American, you're saying you're an adopted child of a political jurisdiction commonly known as America. That must be understood. Let, let's continue. Here, here's one of the things the Moors gotta understand as I start to wrap up. Let's go back to your treaty. Articles one oh one and one oh two tell you about, Moors. We gotta really underscore this because Moors have been indoctrinated to believe they're Americans. Article one oh one of the Act of Al-Dusaras, Chapter five, Article one oh one. "The Moorish custom authorities shall directly inform the diplomatic or consul agents of any violation of this regulation which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that they may be prosecuted before the competent court. Similar violation by Moorish subjects shall be brought directly by the custom before the Shereerian authority." Moors gotta determine, are you gonna remain a Moorish subject in Morocco or you're gonna now return to Morocco and choose between entire submission of the laws of the empire and consent back to Morocco? Not consent back to America? You're supposed to get out of America and return it back to Morocco. This is what Moors gotta understand. This Article one oh one and one oh two is powerful, Moors. Article one oh two. "Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moorish subjects by Shereerian jurisdiction." Let's go, let's go now to the France versus United States of America. Let, let's listen to what happened to you, Moors. We gotta read this. This is France versus United States of America, the judgment, page one ninety-seven. Let's read a little bit about what the ICJ said about Moors, right? In the jurisdiction called consul jurisdiction. Let's read a little history. This happened in nineteen fifty-two. "Since nineteen thirty-seven, a position has been one in which eleven of the powers have abandoned their compitiatory privileges and their consul jurisdiction has ceased to exist. Accordingly, Morocco has been able to make laws and provide for the trial and punishment of offenders who are nationals of these eleven countries. The position of the United States is different and must now be examined. Unlike the Madrid Convention, the Act of Al-Dusaras was general in its scope and was not confined to a limited problem such as that of protection. One, the other hand, on the other hand, the interpretation of the provisions of the Act, what? The Act of Al-Dusaras, must take into account its purposes which are set forth in the preamble and the following words." So the ICJ saying, we're gonna have to enforce these treaty provisions. So they started quoting it, right? They said, inspired by the interest attached to itself to the rate of order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be effected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the interior of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequality." So the ICJ is looking at this saying, the Sultan says, it shall be a council court. There shall be laws. There shall be equality in Morocco. Someone has to maintain this, right? Listen to the ICJ. Watch this. Page one ninety-eight. "Neither of the articles to which reference has been made above nor any other provisions of the Act of Al-Dusaras purports to establish consul jurisdiction or to confirm the rights and privileges of the regime of capitulations which were then in existence. The question therefore is whether the establishment of confirmation of such jurisdiction or privileges can be based upon the implied intentions of the parties to the Act as indicated by its provisions." Listen. "An interpretation by implication from the provisions of the Act establishing or confirming consul jurisdiction would involve a transformation of the then existing treaty rights of most of the twelve powers into a new and autonomous rights based upon the Act." So what's happening? The United States of America is trying to get the ICJ to say, well, since the United States of America usurped the Moors, the United States of America shouldn't have to abide by Moroccan law and that they don't have to worry about the treaty provisions anymore. But the ICJ saying, that, it doesn't say that in the treaty. You have jurisdiction over subjects, but you don't have jurisdiction over competent Moor state governments. Listen. Listen. So right here, it would, it would change treaty rights of the powers, some of them terminable at a short notice. For example, those of the United States which were terminable by twelve months' notice and to rights enjoyable for an unlimited period by the powers and incapable of being terminated or modified by Morocco. You see what the ICJ pointed out? The ICJ said, United States of America, you're trying to position yourself that even when the Moors wake up, they can't enforce their own treaty rights to terminate the treaty or enforce the treaty. So the United States of America was losing in this position. But you gotta understand, the ICJ even pointed out to the Moors that the United States of America only had, only needed a twelve-month notice to be terminated. Terminating what? Their status as being Americans, right? Let's continue. "Neither the preparatory word nor the preamble gives the least indication of any such intention. The court finds itself unable to imply such fundamental a change in the character of the then existing treaty rights as will be involved in the acceptance of this contention." So the United States of America and the International Court of Justice now is stating for the record saying, listen, when these Moors wake up, they can enforce their treaty rights. What type of Moors? Moroccan Moors, right? Moroccan Moors. What type of Moors? Those Moors, going back to your treaty, eighteen eighty, we, we gotta, we gotta clean this up, Moors. We gotta fix this. These Moors, the subjects of Morocco, when they wake up and they realize they have to enforce the customary norms of international law, that they are Moroccan Moors and simply needed a constitution that, that outlined their latitude, longitude. They had their three princes' governments, their flag and seal. And they ratified, deposited, and promulgated that constitution and, and acceded to and accepted all of the treaties and became a contracting party or a contracting state to the treaties and then deposited all of that with the United Nations. Article one oh two, based upon what they call the promulgation. Once you do that, now you can enforce your treaties. Who can enforce the treaties? Moroccan subjects, not Moorish Americans. Americans are not Moroccans. And Moroccans are not Americans. That's what the Moors gotta understand here, okay? So as I start to wrap up, the Moors have to understand one thing and one thing only. The treaties, Moors, are pointing out the parties. You are Dejure Moor, i.e. a Moroccan national of your state, or you're a Moor subject. And in the meantime, the United States of America still has jurisdiction over you. Guess who else has jurisdiction over you? Competent Moor state governments. This is what Moors have to understand. I'm not trying to be insensitive. I'm trying to let the Moors know the truth about law and history. They had to adopt you to tell you that you were citizen of America in order to indoctrinate you to think you were American because if you're claiming to be American, now they're moving you further and further away from being Moroccan. That's the psychosis, all right? So what we're gonna do, we'll wrap it up here, we'll finish up in class sixty-seven. But at the end of the day, Noor Jalali said, I gave you everything to save a nation. Take it. Save yourself. What does that mean? That mean we have to stop procrastinating. We cannot procrastinate. We have to participate in our intentional future to resuscitate the state. I end with that. Islam.